Good afternoon, and welcome to the June 8, 2023 Budget Workshop with Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners. I believe this is our second in a series of budget workshops. And I'll pass things over to Bonnie Wise for some opening remarks.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Commissioners, and thank you for joining us. This is our second budget workshop, and today we're going to discuss water resources, solid waste, and storm water. It's going to be a lengthy presentation, and you all could decide -- actually, staff will keep it as short as possible. But you could decide if you want to ask questions in between on the water and ask questions, or then come back at the end, whatever's easier for you all. And so Lisa Rae is going to go through predominantly, go through the first presentation. Our new solid waste director, Damian Trammell, is here today, and just wanted to give a special shout out to Damian. When we promoted Kim Byer, Damian became the solid waste director, and he has been with our solid waste department for 22 years, and so has grown up in our department. So very, very proud of him. And then storm water, Josh Bellotti is going to go through that. So with that, I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Lisa initially, and George is going to give our first part. Actually, I guess George is going to do a big part of this as well.
Good afternoon.
Thank you, Bonnie. Good afternoon, Mr. Chair and Board of County Commissioners. I appreciate this opportunity to provide you an overview with the Water Resources Department and, you know, share with you some of the challenges that we see coming up over the next couple of years. So on our first slide, yeah, opening this thing up. So I want to take a minute just to highlight the first picture, which is this is our Northwest Advanced Waste Treatment Plant. It's an award-winning plant. Just last week, we received the Earl B. Phelps Award from the Florida Water Environment Association for outstanding performance. This is an extremely well-run plant. The operations and maintenance team do a fantastic job, and it's reflected in the accolades that the state has given. So jumping right into it, our department core services, what are our core services? And they're fundamental, right? We're providing drinking water to our customers, we're collecting and treating the wastewater that we receive back, and then we redistribute reclaimed water back to those communities that have reclaimed systems. Reclaim is very important to us because for every gallon of reclaimed water that's used, that's a gallon of drinking water that is not used. We are fundamentally, you know, focused on protecting public health and safety. That's one of our standbys. We look at environmental stewardship as being a fundamental platform to work from, and public health and safety is super important to us. And certainly, we operate in a fiscally responsible manner. We're constantly looking at ways to cut costs, be more efficient at what we do. And I think we're pretty good at that overall. We do some pretty interesting things, and we've done some amazing projects over the years to really keep our costs low. So with our core services understood, we looked at what's our sustainability points to be made. And so those are pretty basic, right? We're, we want to focus on operations and maintenance dependability, making sure that all the things that we have run the way they should be running. Preservation of our assets. We own a lot of infrastructure, pipes, treatment plants, pump stations. We want to make sure that those are dependable and available for use at all times. Efficiency of operations. I cannot highlight this enough. We are a big utility. We're the third-largest utility in the state, top 50 in the country. There are a lot of expenses that go along to managing this operation, and we're constantly looking at how to be efficient at what we do. Ensuring capacity is available for current and future customers. This is such an important component for us, right? We're a growth utility. We are adding significant numbers of customers every year. We need to make sure that we have a robust system to be able to accommodate water transfer and also wastewater collection. Leveraging technology to improve our core service delivery. We'll show a couple of examples of what we're doing to be able to make, again, make us better at what we do. And then again, protecting public health and safety. So we got our core services, we got our sustainability drivers. And so taking a deeper dive into the elements of those sustainability items, you know, the day-to-day service, what is that? That's our men and women, 800 strong practically in the department, going out every day, making sure they're touching, making sure they're maintaining the system. Very important to us. Preservation of the assets. Again, we've got a lot of parts and pieces. We're a big utility. Making sure that we are 100% compliant and also that our systems are 100% available. If we have a couple of pumps and a pump station and one breaks down, we need to get back up and operating. If it goes out, we don't pay attention to it, and the next one goes out, then you've got an overflow circumstance, right? Public health and safety, environmental stewardship, super important. Efficiency of operations. And I really want to take a moment to look at this slide. This is a picture of our composting facility down at the southeast landfill. For scale purposes, back in the back, you'll see a front-end loader. Those winrows of compost are 10 feet tall, 18 feet wide, and 600 feet long. So it's a pretty massive operation. If you look at the row that's closest to us on the right-hand side, you'll see that little steamy mist. That was a recently turned compost pile. The internal temperature of that compost reaches 155 degrees. Those bacteria that are causing the breakdown of the organics, they elevate the temperature, kills all the pathogens. It's a wonderful, wonderful operation. We took two traditionally difficult waste products: bio solids, byproduct of our wastewater treatment plant process, yard waste from solid waste. We've combined them in a 50-50 mix. Now, instead of having two waste disposal issues, now we've got a product that we actually sell. It's reduced the cost of that overall operation. Again, it's an efficiency item that we always are looking at. Ensuring future capacity. This is a picture of our ongoing, currently ongoing, 42-inch pipeline construction project down in south that is going to deliver more water to the South Hillsborough County. Again, looking at the scope and the scale of this thing, we have big toys. So that's a big valve, it's a big pipeline going in. That's approximately 12 miles of pipe that's currently being installed, should be completed this time next year. Hopefully, better than the next dry season, we should be in good shape. Leveraging technology. This is a picture of our staff in a control room. And again, taking the next step in what technology has to offer to be the best that we can possibly be. In this particular room, we're able to monitor all of our pump station activities, all of our water and wastewater treatment operations. If we have a power outage, we know about it right away. If we have pressure and flow problems, we know about it right away, we can respond to it quickly. Public health and safety. This is a recurring theme. This is what we do, and this is what we're really focused on. We test our drinking water, and we test the compliance components of our wastewater system up to 75,000 times a year. We're constantly taking samples and constantly testing for any compliance issues. So from our core services, from our sustainability drivers, we want to look at what would be the priority funding areas for the department. And certainly, the first one that comes up is our day-to-day operations. Again, I mentioned we are a growth utility. We're adding 6,000 new houses into our system practically every year since 2015. We've ticked down a little bit this year, but we expect that to pick back up. We're the largest member of Tampa Bay Water. We purchase more water than the next two largest member governments combined. Repair and replacement of assets. This is our R&amp;R program. We've got $8 billion worth of totaled up assets. It's a big system, 5,200 miles of pipeline. If you took our pipeline and stretched it out from Tampa to Los Angeles and then kept going, it would stretch to Oahu, Hawaii. That's how much pipeline we have. So you can imagine what it would take to make sure that those systems are always available and always operable. Our new water and wastewater treatment plants down south. You've heard many times on the water side, we need new capacity. We haven't talked a lot about the wastewater, but for every gallon of water that goes into the house, a gallon goes down the drain. So we have equal share of capacity concerns, particularly about our wastewater system. And that will be coming up shortly. Our septic-to-sewer program, we recognize that protection of the groundwater systems was essential in Hillsborough County, so we wanted to make a step, take a step forward towards a program that would convert all of those septic tanks into our central sewer system. And then the low-pressure sewer system as well, that's down in Ruskin, NYMMA. We've got those systems designed right now. We have a little funding from the ARP that the board granted us, so we've got a kickstart on design. We're getting ready to launch some construction work. So again, core services, sustainability items. Now we've identified our priority funding needs. How do we make that happen? So in 2019, we presented a rate plan that would get us there. So in 2019, and then again, 2021, the board approved a six-year plan at 4% per year. This also included a rate index on top of this. So what is a rate index? Rate index was something that we've utilized for the last 15 years. It's tied to CPI, Consumer Price Index. It is applicable to certain components of our operation, our expenses. It's not applied to any pass-through, so no electrical, no Tampa Bay water charges. We're not trying to make money on those things that were charged. So this is strictly to keep pace with inflation. And so that, in addition to these 4%, that was our rate model. That was going to get us all of our five priority funding areas. So I wish I'd have started with this to show you our service area. So this shows Hillsborough County. The city of Tampa bifurcates the county into the northwest service area and the south-central service area. In our service area in particular is the urban service area, and that's that light blue or gray color that you see on the map. Northwest, we've got two water plants and two wastewater plants. In the south-central, we've got three wastewater plants and two water plants. And we are proposing, and you'll see this in a couple of slides, we're proposing another wastewater plant. That'll be located at the landfill. That's our One Water facility. And then also our water treatment plant at the Agmark property. All of the growth is in South Hillsborough County, and so we're going to focus a little bit on that right now. So this highlights the south-central area, and in particular, I want to show you the graphs on the right-hand side. The one in the yellow highlight is our south county plant. And you'll see that the blue bars represent current and projected flows into that plant. The red line represents the capacity of the plant, how much water can it receive. The green dash line is 75% of the capacity of the plant, and that is somewhat the recommended level that you need to be operating in. Once you get above that 75%, the regulatory agencies look to us for a plan of action to show us how, show them how we're not going to overflow the bucket. If the bucket's full, you cannot overflow it. Public health and safety, it's critical. The stair step is currently, on that red line, the stair step is current projects in place to incrementally add capacity to that south county plant. That's the one that's most critical to us right now. And believe me, DEP and EPC are watching this very, very closely, keeping pace with our improvements so that we can ensure them that we're not going to overflow this plant. Later in the presentation, you're going to see when Kevin Moran gets up, he'll talk to you a little bit of some of the regulatory drivers and some of the impacts that the One Water wastewater plant will have once we bring it online. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Lisa Rae, the Director of Water Resources, to talk about some of the economic drivers.
Thank you, George. Thank you, Board. Lisa Rae, Director of Water Resources. So all of us have heard about CPI, and you hear about it on the radio and the inflation that we're facing as a nation, actually as a world. It's happening everywhere. But what you're hearing about generally is food, energy prices, home improvements, cars, and transportation. Those aren't the items that impact our business. They are not the items that are driving the costs that we're seeing. Instead, what we're impacted by are what are called the specialty price indexes. The consumer goods, not really consumer goods, the specialty goods that are used in the construction that we do, from pipe materials, PVC, ductile iron, steel pipe, rebar for buildings and for concrete structures, all of those have gone up well beyond the CPI index. In fact, on an average, from November of 2020 to November of 2022, the increase was 57% across the board for those different materials and those specialty items. Now, there was a lot of volatility during that time, and you can see there has been some stabilization that has occurred, but it isn't just the material costs that have been impacting the prices. We are also facing supply chain issues, which have increased the duration of projects. Where we used to be able to get electrical gear and transformers within 24 weeks, now we're looking at one to two years before that electrical gear arrives on site. What does that mean for a construction project? That means the contractor has to be on site longer. It takes longer to do the work. And I think, as all of us know, time is money. The longer you have to be out there, the longer your staff has to be out there, the more it's going to cost. But they're also running into problems finding skilled labor, the staff that can actually do this type of work and do the construction. And that wage pressure isn't just impacting construction, it's impacting everybody across the board. But one thing that isn't captured when you think about just general inflation is the way it all came together. We had COVID. It hit in 2020. We're still bidding projects. Other communities, other entities are bidding projects, and the contractors are putting their bids together based on what they had projected those costs to be. Well, it takes a while to get through the bidding process. By the time we receive the bids, open them, and award the contract, it can be three to six months later. When you see the kind of volatility that we have been seeing in the market, they had prices, and they had estimated their bids on really old numbers. So on the top right-hand side, there's a graph. The blue line represents where the contractors were bidding their material costs. The red line is what they were actually seeing in costs when they went to issue the PO to the supplier who was going to be providing the material. Lot of contractors backed out of different projects at that point, or were going to owners and asking for change orders, asking for price increases. Or some of them were also just absorbing those costs, depending on the overall impact. The tables didn't really switch until about 2021, 2022. You know, you started to see they were catching up. Their bids are starting to go up, but they still have ground to make up. If they were absorbing those losses, they're going to want to make up that money. And I can't blame them. You know, this is not a charity. They are wanting to, they're in this for a reason. But this had a big impact on us as well. And it impacted our CIP projects significantly. We were putting projects out to bid, and we were seeing the bids come back 25 to 100% higher than what our budget estimates were. Our way of approaching that was to, in some ways, postpone some of those projects, pull them back, not award them, take some of the funds that, from projects that we held back and reallocate them to other projects so we could fully fund them. And we were doing all of this based on risk. We're always assessing the risk. If we do this or we don't do this, what is the impact to public health and safety? Because that is the key here, making sure that whatever's going to have the biggest risks to the community is what we are addressing. So we were doing that with our CIP projects, but we were also seeing increases in our operating expenses, and they increased about 22% over the last five years. And it's variable items, different increases depending on what they are. About one-third of our budget is our purchase of water from Tampa Bay Water for our operating expenses. One-third is our labor costs, and the remaining third covers all of the rest of our operating expenses, from chemicals and electricity and such. And we have seen pressure on all of those. And this does matter because it has an impact on public health and safety. Our ability to complete projects in a timely manner, or not complete them in a timely manner, has a trickle-down effect. And we are reducing the reliability of the system when we postpone maintenance. I'm sure all of you have heard of Jackson, Mississippi, Lansing, Michigan, some of the challenges they have faced. And we do not want to defer the maintenance, so we're always assessing it based on risk, making sure that we're able to prioritize the most risky items and making sure that we're funding those. Some specific projects that tie into this, if we're looking at this, the first one is the existing asset repair and replacement. We're, with our current rates, are about 50% funded. Now, George mentioned how much pipe we have. Pipe generally lasts 50 to 100 years once it's installed. We have areas of our system that were developed in the '40s and the '50s, so they're at that 70-, 80-year mark. So depending on the material, some of those we have already started replacing, and we're supposed to. If we're going to replace all of it within 100-year span, we would need to replace 10% a year. So that would be 50 miles of pipe a year. That's a lot of pipe. Rehab and replace doesn't necessarily mean dig it up. You can also do that with gravity pipe by lining it, and there's other processes that we can use, but it basically provides a new pipe that is reliable. Well, given the size of our system, at this point, we're really concerned about our ability to be able to keep up with that. We also have the Waters Avenue 24-inch Forest Main. That is another repair and replacement project that Forest Main has had several failures in it, and it is, 24 inches is a pretty big pipe, carries a lot of wastewater, and takes it to the northwest plant that you saw at the beginning. And then we have regulatory ones, including the Sharp and the NARP. Those are required to eliminate discharges to surface water. And those were started, we started those well in advance of the regulations that came down from Tallahassee. However, we have expedited them in order to make sure that we comply with the regulatory requirement that no discharges go to surface water by 2032. And then we have the initiatives, septic-to-sewer initiatives, we have the growth in South County. And as you can see from this table, all of them are impacted by the inflation that we have seen. And because of that, we're spending a lot of time looking at our assets and our risks and our prioritization to make sure that we are able to do the best that we can, but it's a limited amount that we're able to do with where we're at right now. Kevin is going to come up and talk a little bit about the regulatory drivers, and then we'll be back up with some more information.
Good afternoon. Kevin Moran, Environmental Services. As George mentioned, Hillsborough County Water Resources is a big utility, and illustrated on the left-hand side of this relatively busy screen is just a portion of our service area we refer to as the south-central service area. And that alone would be a large utility in the state of Florida. It consists of miles of pipe, hundreds of pump stations, and three wastewater treatment plants. And then the words of George Cassidy, "The bucket's full." This area has seen tremendous growth, as we all know, and it's growing more and more all the time. Fortunately, we have a solution for the wastewater treatment capacity, and that is what we're referring to as the One Water Campus. This site, we selected up by the landfill. We think that's a really good site. It's high and dry and away from people, which is two things you want to be if you're a wastewater treatment plant. So we're excited about that potential, and we're moving forward with the design of an 18-million-gallon-a-day wastewater treatment plant there. That's a facility two-thirds the size of the picture that started this presentation. It is a big plant. The ultimate vision for the One Water Campus is to be a, have drinking water, wastewater treatment there, as well as research and recycle water, storm water, and leachate treatment. But that'll come secondary to the building of those wastewater treatment plant that we have a need for now. This effort also requires construction of a number of multimillion-dollar projects that show up on this. It's just little footnotes. So keep in mind that this plant also requires a number of other facilities built that are very expensive as well. So, and the, once the 18-MGD plant is online, it gives us the remedies we need or the solutions we need for the Falkenburg Road capacity. We're able to divert the flow off of it to the new plant, as well as the south-central plant. And this breathing room allows us to do the proper maintenance and care that those facilities This is a zoomed-out or 50,000-foot-level view of the schedule that'll take to build the One Water Campus. These complex and complicated civil engineering constructions are difficult. Just the planning, design, and permitting can take a year to 18 months. The project also requires multiple skilled trades, as mentioned, labor's short right now, and it requires equipment that could have up to a two-year lead time to order. So although it will take a long time to build, this plant will be a five- to seven-year construction project. And that is to say, if we need this project online by 2029, we have to start now. Just importantly on this chart are the red boxes, and those are when we need funding. The first red box, starting in 2024, is already funded. That's the design and permitting of the site. But the other two boxes in 2025 and 2026, there's not currently funding for those, and those are the, those are the funding points we need for construction of the plant. Obviously, water and wastewater utilities are highly regulated industries, for good reason. We don't question that at all. However, it is a challenge to not only maintain all the regulatory requirements we need today, but all the ones coming at us at the same time. For example, the first-listed new rule under federal rules is the Lead and Copper Rule Revision. This has required the department to hire another full-time staff person, a whole new position we had to create this year to meet those requirements. And there's going to be extensive sampling and reporting required because of that rule. The state is also writing rules for us to follow constantly. And again, not that it's a bad thing, but they are requirements that we have to meet. There's no ifs, ands, or buts about it. The first one eliminates surface water discharge. The county's very fortunate there. We have a solution for that. It's called the Sharp-NARP, and unfortunately, it's not fully funded. But the solution at least is in the works, and we will get there. WRD has and always will meet regulatory requirements, but we do need to anticipate that regulatory drivers will continue to drive expenses.
Thank you, Kevin. And I get to address the unpopular stuff, which is the finances associated with how we get there. So this first slide that's up is the rate comparison, and I just provide this as a reflection of, this is where we stand in our rate system versus some of the near neighbors, our brother and sister utilities out there. So we're right in the middle of the pack. We're not the highest, we're not the lowest, we're a little bit below average. This is our current rate structure. If you look at, going back to the beginning, we said that we had core services, we established sustainability directives, we looked at the priority funding areas. And so this graph basically shows with the anticipated increase in costs, this is the total cost expectation over the next 10 years. The red line is showing what our current plan will fund. There is a delta between the red line and the top of the curve. So I mentioned a little bit earlier that we had an index-approved plan. We've had that for 15 years. The index, the current index plan sunsets in 25, fiscal year 25, along with our current rate plan. What we would suggest is to extend that a number of years. It's up to the board, but we are suggesting a 10-year, so we don't have to revisit it anytime soon. Again, that index takes care of the inflationary impacts to our business and helps keep us So now, where do we go with right-sizing the deficit? And so we put together three options. One of them was continuing the 4% that we already had. And this one, quite frankly, is about as ugly as it gets. It goes forever, right? It goes until fiscal year 37. That's a long time at 4%. We looked at a couple of different scenarios. Option two is bumping it up a percent to 5%, out till 32. And then option number three does a little right-sizing initially, trying to satisfy some of the initial cash flow needs at 7% for the first two years, and then drops back down to 4%, which is what we have now. If you take a look at the next five years and the rate impacts, next five years, we're on the far-left-hand side in the gold and the brown with our, you know, with our brother and sister utilities that all have rate increases planned over the next five years. We're positioned fairly well compared to them. We're certainly not over what our other utilities are doing. And something that's not reflected on here, just this morning, Pinellas County announced a four-year 5% increase. What's remarkable about that is that Pinellas County is significantly smaller than us. They do not have a growth component to their customer base. They're static. All the customers are already there, they're built out. And they do not have a significant CIP program. So they're asking for four years at 5%. We're asking for something a little bit longer, but I think the value that we bring is we're really sharpening our pencil on how to get there. Just to let you know, we have our handout to the federal partners out there looking for grants, state partners looking for grants. We have an amazing team that's out searching for every grant opportunity available to us. No matter what it is, we're going after it. Why that is significant for every grant dollar, that's a dollar that our customers do not have to pay. So we're offsetting these inflationary costs with finding grant opportunities. And with that, I will just finish with saying that our next steps are going to be, we'd like to bring back a consent item on the June 22 board meeting to request a public hearing be set for August 16. And at that August 16 board meeting, we would present a rate resolution for the board to consider to extend the current rate plan.
Any questions or comments at this time? Commissioner Cohen?
So in terms of the three different options, how will you know which option we want to go with? And...
[laughter]
go with? And when would we have an opportunity to sort of dive into what each of these things would mean?
That's a really good question. And so I would, I would offer up that option one is the least attractive to me, and I would suggest that we pull that one off the table of consideration. Options number two and three get us to the same endpoint in terms of being able to fund the improvements that are necessary, being able to keep our bond ratings whole. So those are kind of equal. Option three, obviously, you start at a little higher, but you taper that down. Option two is consistent across the period of time. So that, we can bring back the two options and let you talk about it, or you can give us direction later on another scenario.
Okay.
I wanted to also point out, Bonnie and I had a quick conversation, our current plan goes through fiscal year 25. So if we extend the plan, it begins in '26, fiscal year '26. And those rates are always effective October 1 of the new fiscal year. One important component of this, and you saw the schedule from the, from our needs standpoint, and also the schedule that takes place when we're trying to build one of these facilities, before we go borrow any money, before we bond for the first portion of construction, the financial agencies are going to look at our financial capabilities. Much in the same as you going and buying a house or building a house and going to your mortgage company, they're going to check your credit worthiness. They're going to check our credit worthiness. And if they see that we don't have the financial capabilities to borrow the money and pay it back adequately, we're not going to be successful with that.
All right. Thank you. Commissioner Walston?
If certain factors came up and changed, that Congress has promised now that in the new bill, NEPA is finally going to get an overhaul. If those things, because NEPA adds extraordinary delays and costs to progress and ultimately to every program, so if those did get signed into law, would you be reassessing the overall costs of programs, cost reductions? In this process, does staff consider the municipal cost indexes compared to normal CPI? Those two things can be different. Has there been any exploration? I know that there has been ideas in manatee about road stewardships. Are there any type of similar options when it comes to water resource programs? Or do they, do they have to be all completely internal programs? I'm just trying to think of anything that would explore a cost-saving mechanism. I mean, we know that government is, typically does things slower and more expensive. And if there's a way for us to have some type of public partnership that would reduce it, just in a temporary state, I'm just trying to think of different ways that we can mitigate before, I just feel like if we rush into programs while we know that inflation is in a downward trend, is there a way to slightly delay purchasing all of these increased, what did she call it, special product indexes instead of consumer product indexes? Because we know they'll come down. They will.
Right.
That's a really good question. And my response will be, we will always look at opportunities to be efficient and be cost-effective at what we're doing. So if there's some changes, you know, in Washington, if they make some changes that positively impact us, we will, we will leverage that. I failed to mention at the beginning, as a reminder, we're an enterprise fund. So we do not take any money from the general fund. We do not take any ad valorem taxes. We're wholly self-funded. So I've mentioned to Commissioner Walston a couple of times, where the basic model is a cost recovery model. We total up the cost of the operation, we divide it by the water that we deliver to our customers, and one goes in the other, and we figure out a rate structure from there. Totally, it's a nonprofit driver, it's just cost recovery. Where we can, where we can take the opportunity to find savings, we absolutely will. And we even discussed with our rate consultant, let's say the, a plan is approved, let's say option, just for argument's sake, option two is approved. And then, in a couple of years, the economy completely turns around and is robust, and inflation drops out, and it's not, there may be a possibility to drop years off of the end of the plan.
That's what I was looking for ultimately. I appreciate it.
Yeah. Yes, sir.
Commissioner Kemp's next, but before I call on her, it's sort of like Commissioner Walston makes a great point about how the cost of projects can change drastically now where, you know, we're going on the massive cost increases now, but we suspect that, again, when inflation starts to go down, those numbers will reduce. For example, a project I worked on for probably 15 years, Citrus Park Extension, when we started that, initial price tag was 20 million. When the economy was going crazy, it escalated up to 120 million. And I think at the end of the day, it was in the 60 to 70 million dollar range. So that's just one that jumps to mind, the volatility of how much these projects can cost. But I just, I think that's an excellent point. Commissioner Kemp?
More or less those were the first. I wanted to ask about reducing the percentage over the years, but as well, Commissioner Hagan's point about that, and I know I had asked Ms. Wise about that, because we started getting, you know, contractors wanting to pull out of contracts or saying that they are losing money doing work that we had contracted already with RFPs in the past when the inflation just went crazy. And we adjusted a number of contracts here, which was very unusual, just in the last year that, you know, I haven't had that in my experience. And I know you said, with all your long experience in finance, it was very rare. And I know I asked a question at the time, and I said, so if we adjust the contracts up, which I thought was reasonable and that we should do, what happens if, if we contract now and then some of this inflation gets under control? Is there ever adjusting of contracts down? Just to...
You know, it's, that's, that's a really good question. I'm not sure that we, we ever see much adjusting down, right? It always seems like we're adjusting up.
I didn't think so. I just, you know, I wondered if there is any kind of mechanism, or maybe if that was built in contractually, we could do this, or, you know, somehow.
We can consider that. Now, I will say, there's a little bit of comfort in knowing that we're probably about a year away from really bidding these projects. We're in the design phase right now for the plant expansions. So we're launching to the design, and we'll probably be a year away. Now, maybe in a year, the inflation index comes way down, and maybe our position is proved.
Probably not, but...
Talking about cost inflation, we started this program in 2018, estimated it at about $460 million. The entry price now is between 750 and 8. So that's how much of an impact. The One Water Campus, the pipeline corridor, and the pump station, all of that in, it's almost double.
And that being said, I think it was a really excellent presentation. I mean, we've heard about, and we know, and it will not go down, is the inflationary pressures of the workforce. That is a permanent, ongoing thing. When we're talking about materials, we may be able to talk about adjustments in terms of those kinds of things. But to see this data here, PVC pipe, 105%, I mean, a lot of them are over 50%, but that's 105%. Diesel fuel, I had no idea, 200%. But things, fabricator rebar, 57% basically. I mean, it's like, kind of amazing to see, and that may, we don't know if those will be permanent or not, but people somehow think that, you know, government has the capital costs and the workforce costs, and our inflationary pressures are the same for all the work we do as, as anyone else experiences in their life. But I did want to say too, I just, I think we need to do a story on this or get some more information. You know, I, this project, I just think is so innovative, and I know it's expanding at a great pace to use our biosolids in our yard waste, which we used to pay millions of dollars to dispose of, and not very satisfactorily at that. And so I think it's an amazing program, and it might be worth, in the future, just highlighting to this board, but also to the public. I'd like a lot more attention, because I, I think it's really good. And we, we're making a few million dollars, as I understand, off it, and it's expanding. And so it's just, and we're not spending what we used to. So it's, it's really good. But I appreciate, I always appreciate all the information that we get in terms of the water and wastewater and our enterprise water system.
Thank you, Commissioner.
I think, and I think it gives me a lot of faith in the work we're doing.
Commissioner Owen?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you for your presentation today. And I realize South County is where a lot of these issues, the genesis of this and where we're at, so I appreciate all your hard work. I'm just curious, and actually, Commissioner Kemp, I was going to allude to the contracts that we never renegotiate down on these contracts. I'm just curious how that works. When, when, when we procure, when we have a contract, so I understand during COVID there was a lot of that going on, and just a lot of cease working for the roads especially, because, you know, for roads and things like that, you're not just depending on, on that particular contract, you're depending on TECO and all these other moving parts to come together. But I guess I'm just curious on that process, is, is there, do we have provisions, I guess, in our contract that allow them to, to be released if there's a certain cost measure that they can't meet? Or is it just one of those things, we're in a position where we're hand-tied, saying, we've started a project, and if we can't finish it with them, we'll have to go retain somebody else in the, in the similar field at maybe even a higher rate than the ones that they're trying to renegotiate? I know that's a mouthful, but is that, is that it? Or...
So, the delivery process that we're envisioning for the, for these projects is a design-build process. So it's a combined effort where you procure a team that's going to design it for you, and then, once you get to a certain phase of design, you can start beginning construction. Some of the beauty of that is that, once we get to the place where we've got sufficient design to really get some hard estimates together, it's an open book bid. So our contractor team will come forward, they'll start pulling the parts and the pieces. We will get to play in that sandbox with them, developing that cost. If we don't like the cost, we can reject it. If it's too much, we can reject it. If we find opportunities to value engineer certain components, we will take that and leverage that opportunity. One of the things that we are really going to take a deep dive into is owner-procured materials. Because of the long lead time, because of the tax savings associated with it, if we buy it as a government entity, we're not paying taxes. So, you know, in a, in a 700 million, 750 million dollar project, you've probably got, you know, half of that in materials. And if we can leverage our buying capacity early, save on some time delivery, then we've got control over some of those costs.
Okay. And could you pull up that chart again where you showed the three different options real quick?
Easy for you to say. Can I pull it up? Here we go. Whee!
Okay. And, so, you know, obviously, I'm looking at it, and I'm trying to have less sticker shock to the folks in my district as possible. But at the same time, I would like to know from you all, is it, is it, for us as a county, what's more beneficial in this situation? I know we're not probably looking at option one. So of these two options, and maybe you still need time to consider this, is the, is the influx highly necessary to 7% right now to get the job done? One versus the other? Well, I kind of wanted to get your opinion.
So if, if, in a perfect world, if I could choose, I would choose option three, because it gets us a little bit more money upfront quicker. It also potentially reduces some borrowed money down the line, but both of these options get us to the same place.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Commissioner Cohen?
Thank you. I just, I wanted to add to this discussion about the renegotiation of the contracts later. It's my understanding, I know that it's the case for the, the presentation we're about to see, but I would think it's true for this as well, there aren't a lot of companies out there that can do this. These, these are, I mean, when you think about what it is that is being asked to be designed and built here, your, your options to have it done correctly are fairly limited, right?
Absolutely correct. So this is going to gain national attention. National, very large, very large construction engineering companies.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Commissioner Myers?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Owen, you kind of touched on my thoughts on looking at Slide 10, the priority funding, and then looking at Slide 25, which you are already there, George, on the fixed rate. I do have some concerns on the two options. In particular, option three, where we have the 7% in year '26 and '27, but 5% in year 2020, 2026 and '27 on two, but then the rest of the time it stays at 5%, which, you know, we're anticipating that rate increase instead of going back to 4%.
So, again, these are options, right? We played around with various scenarios, and so, you know, we could look at other scenarios, but these were two that seemed to be reasonable to us.
But to go back to four in option three, just something to think about. Yes, to go back to four. When we're already at four now, and what we anticipate in the future, you got to add that.
So if I can just jump in, there are a multitude of options. So we were trying to show you one that keeps the four, and I wanted you to see how long that would be required. And then we were showing you ones that, if we went up a little bit, but kept it more stable, and then one if we had the little bump. You know, there's no magic, it could be six and a half, it could be, drop it a little bit, we can do the math. But we just wanted you to see kind of magnitude for purposes of this today. There's a lot in between.
Okay. But I like to...
So your feedback like that is very helpful to us. You know, George said that, you know, he doesn't really care much for one, because it just goes out too long. But the good part about one is that it keeps it, you know, with that 4%. But that feedback for us helps us know where we could sharpen the pencil a little bit and gives us some direction.
The priority funding, the needs, and that was the reason I was basing my...
And I would just say, from my experience, the board's always wanted options to consider on any type of situation like this. So whatever you can provide to give us further guidance and direction, I'm sure will be appreciated.
Thank you, Chair.
To no other comments or questions, we can move on to solid waste.
So Damian Trammell's going to come up, and then George is going to step in as well, he's going to put on a different hat and move to solid waste. So George, of course, oversees both wastewater and, and solid waste. So we're going to move to the next presentation.
Good to see everyone. My name is Damian Trammell, Solid Waste Management Department Director. Today I'll be going over a brief presentation of our budget for FY24 and FY25. It'll be done in two parts. The first part will just be given a, a brief overview of our system. The second part will be the hard part. George Cassidy will give it. I'll get to talk more about the financials of the system. And so, really appreciate you doing that for me today. Our department vision is to be a long-term, sustainable, solid waste-integrated system to be financially responsible. We're going to do this by ensuring that we have disposal capacity available for the present and for the future generations. We're going to seek opportunities to advance technology for our collection and disposal system. We're also going to make sure that we protect health and safety of our environment. Department goals is to maintain predictable competitive rates. Over the past several years, we've relatively kept rates fairly flat, but we're in a position now with the cost of inflation, the cost of equipment, contractual costs have all gone up. So we are in a position now to raise rates, and we're going to talk more about that. The landfill is a proposition of ours. Extending the life of our landfill is very important. We're going to do this by maximizing the efficiency of our resource recovery facility, investing the necessary capital to make sure it's running at optimum level. Our resource recovery facility is a unique system, so it's costly to keep it up and running. This, our facility is about 35 years of age currently. Decreasing recycling contamination... Decreasing recycling contamination is another way of managing our waste and waste diversion, ensuring that we are not disposing of waste that should not be in our landfill. Collaborating with other jurisdictions, that's my job. I need to make sure that we're all on the same page with the city of Tampa, Plant City, Temple Terrace. Make sure we understand what it means to have a waste diversion plan in place. Hillsborough County is, I guess, the big brother of all of them. When things shut down, we're obligated by ordinance to ensure that they, for us to open our doors. So we need to make sure they got a good plan in place, and we'll be doing that. Increasing recycling is also important for us as well. We provide services to over 300,000 residents throughout Hillsborough County. That accounts to about 1.2 million services a week. We provide two garbage pickups, one yard waste pickup, and one recycling pickup weekly. We have five community collection centers positioned throughout the county to make it convenient for our residents to dispose of their waste at no additional cost to them. We have, we offer a recycling service. We have a resource recovery facility. We have a landfill. We have three yard waste facilities, and we have three household hazardous waste events. We generate over a million tons of solid waste annually. About 40% of that waste has gone through our resource recovery facility. About 30% is landfill. 8% is recycled, and 12% is yard waste, and the others, other types of waste. Ideally, what we'd like to see is more recycling and less landfilling. Our strategy is simple: waste reduction. Reduce, reuse, and recycle. Reducing waste means just don't generate if we don't need to. We do a good job. We're going to improve in that in terms of communicating with the public to give them an idea of what it means to not, and how not to create waste, and reuse, just to repurpose waste. We've done a great job on that. We started a program with Goodwill. They actually, Goodwill's actually at one of our sites, and they help us repurpose materials so that we're not disposing of that material in our landfill or at our waste engine plant. I think Assistant County Administrator mentioned our compost facility. Hey, I want to make sure we recognize Kimberly Byer, who was part of starting that program. Very excited about that. Excited about building on that program as well. And what can't be recycled, we want to be, we want to recover it and means at our resource recovery facility and turn it into a resource for us. Our resource recovery facility turns, we like to say, turns trash into cash. And so we want to make sure we turn that solid waste into a resource. And the least desirable is our landfill. We believe in getting out, we're a public service. Engaging and connecting with the public is very important. We've provided, over a few months now, over 70 presentations, over 153 media engagements. That number's increasing daily, and it's needed to let the people know what are we doing? What are they getting with their dollars? Surge don't stop at the curb. I mentioned that we provide the 2-on-1 curbside pickup, the garbage. But we also have 10 cubic yards that people can deliver their waste to, I mentioned the five community collection centers, up to 10 cubic yards of solid waste. And that's waste that cannot be collected from curbside, such as a couch or a chair. They can deliver it to one of our community collection centers at no additional cost to them. We also have two tons of waste that they can deliver at two of our yard waste facilities. And we have our household hazardous waste events. That's very important. It protects the integrity of our system. We want to make sure that we're not disposing of any type of chemicals that may have, may impact our environment in a negative way. Discounts and other programs. We offer a 28.75% discount on a disposal assessment for our seniors who are 65 years of age or older. We also offer a hardship credit program as well. And that $60, we reduce the disposal assessment by $45 and the collection assessment by $15. There's criteria that they must meet, primarily is general income and property value. We have a community collection program, and we have a backdoor disability pickup as well. That's designed for residents who are unable to transport their waste to the curbside. We're partnering with them to define a specific area that's beneficial for them, and we'll pick up their waste at no additional cost to them. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Assistant County Administrator George Cassidy.
Thank you, Damian. So I think it's important to tell a little bit of a 10-year history story here. And so, in 2013, we had a collections contract that was issued. On the heels of the Great Recession, we got extremely good rates, and that contract was seven years long. And so it terminated in 2020, and in that timeframe, we were preparing to rebid the collection contracts. We did that. We put in a lot of expectations. We put in a lot of items in the specifications that were going to protect our customers and their pickup requirements, or the pickup requirements. The bids came back extremely high. In fact, they were probably 3X where we were. And when we opened those up, there was a little sticker shock, more than a little. There was a lot of sticker shock, and we ultimately rejected all the bids. We went back into our specifications to look at what we could improve, maybe make a little bit more friendly with the contractors bidding the work, and we reissued an RFP. And in 2021, we opened bids, and they were very good in terms of what the expectations for the current market were. They were lower than what the expectations were. So we went ahead and awarded those contracts in 2021. Because we were, because it's very capital, equipment-intensive, you know, these companies have to go out and purchase new vehicles. These trash trucks are typically a one-year lead time. There was a gap, and we filled that gap with an interim agreement with the old contractors to continue to pick up while we waited for the new contract to pick up. In 2022, we started that pickup, started that contract, and it's been in operation, and it's been very, very successful. So if we look at where we were in the last couple of years, from 2013 to 2020, rates were very flat. They were very flat. And so the annual assessment hovered around $220, $220, $230. When we issued the bridge contract with the old contractors to keep the collections going in 2021, there was a little bit of a bump. We negotiated some higher rates so that they could continue to perform that service for us. And then in 2022 was the bump to the new contract. Because, you know, there was a graduation of going from old to new, and there was a split in the fiscal year. We basically had, in 2022, eight months of a previous fiscal year, which softened that initial increase. In 2023, we did some financial maneuvering so that we could take advantage of some reserves, understanding that the community at large was suffering from a lot of economic challenges. Certainly, inflation had really taken hold at that point in time. And we leveraged our existing, our reserves to be able to keep that same rate in 2023 as 2022. But ultimately, we're faced with having to come up to speed with what these new contracts were bid at. And that is, the 2024 proposal is to go up about $85 at $4.37. That's $85 a year. So it's at $4.37. Looking at this chart a little bit differently, this is a graphical representation of that same information. You can just see how we tracked very flat for the first seven years, and then the gradual increase, and ultimately the full fare in 2024. So where does the money come from, and where does it go? We've got two basically separate functions. We've got a collections function, and that's collected in one assessment. We've got a disposal, which goes either to our resource recovery, or to recycling, or to the landfill. And so that is the disposal assessment. Combined, we spend a significant amount of money on our contracted costs. And just like you heard with Water Resources, the same economic drivers that are causing inflationary impacts to Water Resources also impacts solid waste as well. So we're looking at, you know, fully funding the new collections contract. On the disposal side, we've got recycling costs that we've got to consider. Those are going up substantially. We're looking at increased maintenance requirements and capital requirements at our resource recovery facility. That's a 35-year-old facility. It's aged. You know, as you would expect, with anything, in time, it's going to break down. It's going to need recapitalization. That's where we're at with that. Again, this is a summary table of the collection and disposal costs, where we are today and the proposed. Again, we're looking at an $84.72 per year assessment increase. You know, looking in the future, our resource recovery facility has been at capacity since 2015. So when we built that facility, it was put in place, keeping in mind that we wanted to minimize what went to the landfill. Landfills are incredibly difficult to permit. They're incredibly difficult to get. And, you know, at the end of the day, I think we all decided we didn't want to build a mountain of trash if we didn't have to. So the resource recovery facility actually is a very, very, very good option for handling municipal solid waste. We need to be looking in the future at either expanding the current one or building a new one. If we look at our challenges with recycling, recycling has a significant contamination concern right now. We're looking at improved collection and sorting capabilities. You hear us talk about a MRF. A MRF is a materials recovery facility. We're getting ready to launch that in the next year, and that will, we're hopeful that that will vastly improve our collection, separation, and success with recycling. Next step, similar to Water Resources, we'd like to come back at the next board meeting and request a public hearing be held. That public hearing will be held, will be scheduled for August 16th to consider these, this rate resolution and the increases to our assessments. One of the significant requirements during these processes, we have to do adequate notification to our customers. So we have to send out notification cards advising them of this. And so there's a time, pretty big time gap. From a timing perspective, August 16th is pushing it probably to about the last timeframe that we can, because we have to get this information to our tax collector to be able to put this on a tax rule for our customers. So with that, thank you very much. Available for any questions.
Thank you, George. Commissioner Walstall.
Thank you, Chair. Mr. Trammell, you did, I know it was your first time speaking, you did a really good job. You're really poised. Mr. Cassidy has at least two years on you, so, you know, he's more solid. Speaking of Mr. Trammell, I want to try and be thoughtful and set him up for success. And I'm confused, I guess. We keep saying cost recovery. Is it only a cost recovery for the cost to operate? And where I'm coming from is, Mr. Trammell said that this facility was 35 years old. He and I were in grade school, I guess, maybe. Maybe me a little less. So does the cost not anticipate, or is it not allowed to by statute, a recovery for a renewal of capital needs and the replacement of facilities? Or does that, is that legislative prohibited?
We can include in our rate analysis.
So does this increase?
Yes.
So the increase does?
The increase does.
Okay. That's...
Not for a new facility, but for maintaining the current one.
So only for maintaining?
Correct.
And it wasn't allowed to anticipate for a renewal?
Not necessarily allowed. We just haven't done that yet, because we already knew there was a sizable increase coming on this assessment to cover the assessment of the collection costs. So incrementally, we're looking at next year and the following years, developing a master plan for all the needs in this solid waste collection and disposal.
On the interim agreement, I'm thankful that you sent everything back out to bid. Good job in getting it drastically reduced. What I'm curious about is, can you provide us, or at least my office, I'm interested, and anybody else, what changes did you go after to reduce it so drastically? And are you going to make sure and share those best practices? Because if you were at 14 and you got bids back, I guess, double near at 30, and you were able to reduce it something like 17, I can't remember exact numbers. I mean, that's significant. So I'd be very curious what we were able to carve off and how we can make sure that we don't accidentally do that again in the future.
So we were, we can do that. We can summarize that. But I can tell you, you know, in a big-picture format, we had suffered some service delivery failures at the end of the contract period for the previous haulers, significant to the point where we considered terminating them for cause. Missed pickups, no pickups, big routes being missed. It was awful. And what we did, in somewhat of a reaction to that, we put in a lot of protections in terms of liquidated damages for nonperformance. We put in a lot of protection measures that, you know, hey, if you miss the pickup, you got to have backup equipment to come in. And, you know, if you've got a truck that broke down, you got to have another one online. And at the end of the day, that was just too much to add to the plate.
Okay. Okay. Thank you very much.
Commissioner Owen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just curious, when you were mentioning, I guess, the lack of rate hikes last year, you mentioned economic challenges. And I didn't know exactly what you meant by that. Were you meaning economic challenges to us or to our constituents? Like, could you elaborate on that? I thought that's what I heard you say.
Well, so looking at the future needs of the department, I was trying to reference that the very same economic challenges within Water Resources in terms of labor costs and material costs and contracted costs, those are impacting solid waste as well. So going forward, we just got to be mindful of what those impacts might be.
Okay. So that was meaning economic...
Mr. Chair, you okay? I think you were referring to last year when we were, we did not raise the solid waste rates, because we did have that financial accounting change, because the cost of living increases for our citizens was so great, we did not want to add to that burden. And since we were able to have this financial, one-time financial mechanism, we passed that on to our constituents, basically. So we did not have a rate increase last year, as was expected.
Yeah. Yeah. And thank you, Bonnie. And that's what I'm kind of getting at, is, God, it's my first year as a county commissioner, and these rate hikes are coming right now. Why weren't they really addressed last year, you know?
It would, so this $4.37 would have happened last year, were it not for some pretty creative financial maneuvering that we did.
Is there any other creative financial maneuvering?
We're tapped out.
Thank you.
I just have one question. Is there any particular reason why we're scheduling both rate increases on the same day?
No particular reason. We can certainly look at shifting that, if that's helpful. We're happy to do that.
I just happened to notice that, and I don't ever recall us doing two on the same day. So I guess we're just looking forward to a room full of people?
We can...
Get it all done in one meeting?
We can do it in one meeting, but we can split it, too. We can, we can look at bringing something back in July. Water Resources is a little bit easier to bring that one forward sooner, so we could do that one. Solid waste, a little bit more challenging.
The ones for, it's a great, really great question. The one for solid waste and stormwater, which is next, those are ones that are driven by putting things on the tax roll. The Water Resources does have a little bit more flexibility.
I was looking for the trifecta for the next one, but I noticed that one's in the meeting before. So at least you didn't give us three in one meeting. So I appreciate your thinking of us on that one, at least.
Anything for you, Chair.
On a serious note, Mr. Trammell, can you come up here real quick? I just want to say congratulations on becoming director. You did an outstanding job in your previous position. And I know in my office, you were always the go-to guy, because you got things done. So I just want to say congratulations.
Thank you, Chair.
Yes, sir.
Okay. No other comments? Next one?
So the next one is stormwater, and Josh Biladi will take us through this one. I think George is off the hook on this one, right?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Josh Biladi, Engineering and Operations Department. And I'm going to be taking you, talking to you today about the county's stormwater system, the value it provides to the community, and the budget needed to provide these core services. So to start with, the purpose of a stormwater system is ultimately to protect and preserve property. We serve the community by working to reduce the risk and impact of flooding, particularly stormwater runoff from our roadways. And we do this to improve water quality, reduce flooding, and respond to storm events such as hurricanes and tropical storms. The county has a lot of stormwater infrastructure throughout the community that needs to be maintained and preserved in order for the system to function, and they continue to age and deteriorate. Many of our stormwater assets are at or beyond their expected lifespan. And we want to be proactive in this replacement cycle, but many times, we end up being reactive and dealing with an emergency failure or collapse. with an emergency failure or collapse. The stormwater system requires day-to-day maintenance and repair as well. Some of these activities include cleaning out stormwater pipes and open drainage ditches, removing sediment to restore water flow. We also perform repairs to pipes and drainage structures, and we mow a significant amount of ditch area primarily through contracted services. In fact, the acres mowed on this slide amount to the overall area of Baton Rouge, Louisiana. Maintenance and repair work that we do is spread across the county, as you can see in the map here, and the work is varied with more than 3,700 work orders in FY22. The capital projects, as you can see, are spread out, too, across all areas of the county. The majority of these include culvert replacements, replacing old corrugated metal pipes with new reinforced concrete. We also have projects designed to improve drainage and reduce flooding in neighborhoods and projects that are focused on water quality. And speaking of, our water quality programs are tied to regulatory compliance in order to maintain the county's MS4 permit through the MPDS program. In the last few years, we've made some significant progress and impacts to the community. Between FY19 and '22, we replaced nearly 200 stormwater pipe systems, over 31,000 feet of pipe. We designed and constructed 38 local neighborhood drainage improvement projects to alleviate flooding, and we have significantly enhanced our maintenance, cleaning 88 miles of drainage ditches, completing over 92,000 miles of street sweeping, and repairing over 36,000 feet of curb and gutter. So that was a lot about what we do. Now, how does the county pay for all of that? The stormwater program is funded through a non-ad valorem assessment, which looks like this, a separate line item down at the bottom of your tax bill. And as you can see from this sample, the current fee is, on average, $81.43 annually. One important point to note here is that in addition to the non-ad valorem assessment revenue, the county's stormwater program is also supplemented by the general fund, and I'll get into more detail on that in a moment. Some of the challenges that we face with the county's stormwater system include aging and failing infrastructure. The more that we're in a reactive versus preactive mode in asset preservation, that increases risks of flooding in our community and can impact water quality. The county's historically not had sufficient resources to keep up with the growing needs of the stormwater system. And as I just mentioned, the stormwater program is not self-sufficient. The assessment revenue is supplemented with an additional $20 million each year from the general fund. So talking about our infrastructure, what does that look like? We have almost 8 million feet of buried stormwater pipe, over, excuse me, 8 million feet of stormwater pipe and over 7 million feet of open stormwater ditches, thousands of ponds and drainage structures, and also 40 stormwater pumping stations across the county. And these 40 pump stations, shown here on the map, are critical infrastructure located in areas that are low-lying and have no natural outfall, which means that without us physically pumping stormwater, these areas will flood because the water has nowhere to go. A couple of specific examples of this include the Duck Pond Pump Station in the university area, our largest pump station, which serves the entire university area community, the VA Hospital, and parts of USF. Then in Town and Country, we have the Lower Sweetwater Creek Pump Station, which is one of our most critical, again, serving a populated residential area as well as a hospital. Each one of these 40 pump stations serve, similarly, serve a critical function in neighborhoods throughout the county. And when this critical infrastructure is not functioning properly, this is a result. Significant neighborhood and community flooding issues causing property damage and public safety concerns. So it's important that we have our stormwater system in good working order and assessment revenue that allows us to do that. So with regard to the assessment, just want to give some brief historical background. From the program's inception, for almost 30 years, the assessment was a flat rate across the board, and it remained relatively low, going from $12 in the 90s and 2000s up to $42 per year by 2019. And then in 2019, the county adopted a new tiered rate system based on impervious area with an annual rate of $76.36 for the medium, single-family tier, where most of the residential properties fall. And the board approved a plan for incrementally increasing to 96.62 over the next five years. Subsequently, during the pandemic, the board postponed the next two years of incremental increases and established a hardship exemption program. The board also allocated one-time American Rescue Plan funds to some needed capital projects. Then last summer, the board adopted the first of those approved incremental increases for the 2023 tax year, taking the, excuse me, taking the annual assessment from 76.36 to 81.43. And so this year, staff is proposing to continue with that approved plan with the next incremental increase, taking the annual assessment to 86.49. Since it has been a few years, I just want to go back and briefly revisit the 2019 rate study proposal. The rate study established a target level for annual revenues in order to keep up with the needs of maintaining and repairing the stormwater system, and that's the green line on the graph. But this would have required the annual assessment going up to $193 a year. What was approved was a maximum annual assessment of 96.62, which I mentioned on the previous slide. And so the result is that the stormwater system still requires that $20 million in general funds annually. That's the shaded yellow area. And even at that level, falls short of the target for a sustainable system, which still leaves us playing a little bit of catch-up. So as it stands today, this shows how the program's annual funding is allocated. The $54 million total at the bottom includes $34 million in annual assessment revenue and $20 million in general fund. So about half of that total goes into day-to-day maintenance, street sweeping, cleaning ditches, repairing curb and gutters, $16 million towards replacing pipes and rehabbing pump stations, and the rest in neighborhood flood protection projects and water quality. With this year's incremental increase, the annual revenue is projected to increase by $2.6 million. So the plan is to invest $2.1 million of that into the much-needed additional pipe replacement and pump station repairs, and then half a million into additional drainage improvement projects. This chart here shows how Hillsborough County compares with its neighboring counties and cities in terms of annual stormwater assessments. So we're there in yellow at the annual rate of $81 with the proposed increase to $86 annually. And this table illustrates that same incremental increase over the different tiered rates. Note that we are required to hold public hearings each year for the board to adopt these rates, and these approved and planned incremental increases are needed to support and proceed with planned projects. Without them, repairs and maintenance gets deferred. So then just to close by talking about the next steps, at the next regular BOCC meeting, there'll be an item to request and schedule the annual public hearing. Following that, the county will send out mailers and advertise the public hearing, which will take place on August 2nd. Again, not the same date as the others. The final tax roll is due to the Tax Collector's Office by September 15th. The last item I wanted to mention is that it has now been five years since our last rate study, and so we are planning to revisit this next year with an updated rate study to evaluate the program in light of continuing growing needs as well as the additional inflationary pressures since the last study. So with that, I will thank you for your time and offer to answer any questions you have.
Thanks, Josh. Commissioner Winstall?
Thank you, Chair. The 20 million, what does it pay for annually?
The majority of that goes to our operations and maintenance.
So is it mostly payroll? Is it staffing? Or is it maintenance of pipes? Is it the, is it the maintenance, the cost to clean the ditches?
It's a little bit of both. It's a mix of personnel and operating costs.
Okay. And it's, are these general funds countywide or unincorporated?
It's about 80% unincorporated.
Okay, thank you. The square foot calculation slide that you had up, it seemed pretty significant jumps. I'm just thinking about average familial income for someone that lives in a 1,500-square-foot house compared to someone that can afford a 3,200-square-foot house. So who created those three segments? Who created those splits?
I think you're referring to, if I can pull up the slide.
Yes.
This year with the different tiers. Yeah, that all came out of the rate study that was conducted in 2019 by our rate consultant, and they looked at average impervious area for different size of residential properties. So all of those, those different categories, the calculated rates are based on an average impervious area of homes in those size categories.
Were any conversations had about, okay, so there is a, so you only start calculating per square foot once they live in a mansion, basically?
Yes, and those are treated basically the same way as the commercial properties are by measuring the actual impervious area.
Did the board at that time have any conversations about that scale and adjusting it at all about moving the 1,500-square-foot upwards? Like changing that sliding scale to where medium-sized families aren't a 1,501-square-foot home? I'm just thinking, because that's a pretty large gap, 1,501 to 3,200-square-foot home. What I'm thinking about is that it's a flat increase to individuals living in that sliding scale, and it's probably where most people fall, except for the income comparison of a 1,501-square-foot house compared to a 3,200-square-foot home is extremely significant. That's, that's kind of where I'm, I'm kind of rethinking. Is there options to adjust that sliding scale for the, to maybe lessen the medium single family and increase what we consider a large single family, which would reduce the impact for the largest percentage base of families in Hillsborough County?
Yeah, yeah, I think I understand what you're asking. I know when the rate consultant looked at this in 2019, they were basing these recommendations on industry standard practices, and these did go to the board. We held some workshops and discussions with the board at that time when this was implemented. But I do think that there's an opportunity, if we do another update to the rate study next year, for them to look at the tiers and the scales between the tiers. And so we could certainly ask them to do that as part of that analysis.
Yeah, I would be interested to see before we vote on approving anything, what that would mean financially if we adjusted that scale, shifted a little bit of the burden. I mean, AOC would just be giddy about eating the rich, right? So just a thought. I think that that scale could be really meaningful, and I would, I would be very interested to see what that means dollar for dollar in helping the lower-income families.
I think we can definitely take that into consideration for next year. I think we're probably beyond the point of making changes to the tiers for this upcoming tax year, but definitely with the rate study update next year, we can look at that.
Commissioner Cup?
Thank you. And I wouldn't disagree with doing that, Commissioner Winstall, or looking at that. And I think, and what's kind of amazing to me, because we were the board that started the change on, I was part of that board, I'm not sure who was, except for Commissioner Hagan at this point, but the, and you may not, it's, it was kind of shocking to me when I first saw it because for the decades before, we had 92 to 2014, just a flat-out $12 per whatever residence or business, no scale tiering. And 2016 and 2017, it was $30 per unit. Didn't matter what it was, I don't think. It was just per business, per whatever. And then in, and then in 2019, it went to 42, and again, it was per unit. So it was the first time that there was an attempt at scaling of any sort, and I think that that could definitely be refined and really speaks to a little better way of distributing the pain.
All right. I don't see any other questions or comments, so appreciate it, Josh. Bonnie, anything else you need to add? All right. With that, we're adjourned.